Oh, Zach.
Thanks, hon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
All right. It is just after four P M. We're gonna wait one second to make sure that our councillor Megan Alter. Oh, I think that she has joined. Can you hear us councillor Alter?
Kelly, Sean not here today?
I don't see a mic for her. Like the little mic icon.
That would be on her end if she has to enable it.
Councillor Alter, can you enable your mic or turn off the silence mic? There you go. All right. Can you just, can we hear your voice?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, all right. We are ready to start. All right, today is Tuesday.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yes. Today is Tuesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-four. It is just after four P M. And I'm gonna call the city council work session in order. The first, well, welcome to everyone that is here present and those that are virtual. Hello to all of the fellow councillors that are here. You'll see that councillor Alter is virtual. And councillor Sean Harmson may not be here for the work session, but do plan to be here for the six P M formal meeting. We're gonna start with item number one, clarification of agenda items. Hearing none, we're gonna move on to item number two, information packet discussion, November twenty-first. I do not. Yep, we'll come back. We'll go on to November twenty-seventh. And December fifth. Anyone have anything from those items?
Wanted to point out IP four on that December fifth. I found really worth noting that the Iowa City Association of Realtors data indicating that median home prices are up dramatically. But that's largely because the price person, or the the actual size of homes keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And as we dive into the comprehensive plan process next year, that's just a little nugget of information that I think is really sort of important to note as we continue to talk about affordable housing and maybe where there's gaps.
Right. Anything else from any of those three? Information packets? I know that Mayor Protem had one item that she was.
What's your, I could find it.
Uh, November twenty-first is what you were looking for potentially?
November twenty-first. Uh, I think it's one, two, three, four, five. I don't think. It's big number ten, I think, or whatever. I forget, I forget the big number.
Oh, sure.
Hey Jeff, what's the big number for the, like, number of the homeless? Was big ten?
I think that's the December fifth IP.
Uh, December fifth.
And that's the one that councillor Mo mentioned as well, IP four. We have the the general statistics that staff is just choosing and then we created a second page to meet your specific requests. I do not have a source for the homeless count yet, a monthly homeless count. I'm not aware of one. I've reached out to the shelter house to see if they're aware of one and they are not. So I'm still trying to find if there is a a source, but our staff and shelter house staff are not aware of a monthly count. So we'll keep looking, but I'm less optimistic that there's a data source for that.
This is the last page. Yes.
Like they said, they don't have like a monthly, how many people we have on the street every month?
Correct. I mean, there's there's a sheltered and unsheltered, meaning who may be staying in their facility versus who who may be staying in the street. In my understanding, you wanted both numbers.
Yes, I really wanted both number. And especially now we have, I know that we do have emergency shelter, which is great, but not for family. Like a couple of days ago, I had find a family, they are in the street because they are not gonna be allowed to be in the emergency shelter because it's for not designed for family. So we we really need to do something about it. And that's why I'm asking the people who are outside because it could be a family who's staying on the street. And that will make us move and figure out something, maybe for winter especially, for a family oriented place. So, yeah.
There is a one time per year federally mandated count. That's if you scroll up two pages. We reported the twenty twenty-four, it's called the Point in Time Count, and that is reported across the country. And I know the the team that does that count here in Johnson County is probably putting together their plans because there's a single day in which those counts take place. So we should have the the change and we can go back any number of years for for previous data, but the twenty twenty-five count will be conducted in January, this coming January.
Sure. At least for now, if we cannot count the people on the street, so we can just at least count like every month, how many people in the shelter currently? And I know there is a stretch outreach also for coordinator entry, but I I'm not sure how they collect that that yet. And maybe, we, we, this is great to start with, and I think we're just going to continue build on it and and figure it out.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thanks.
Anything else from the IPs? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to item number three, University of Iowa Student Government Updates, U S G. Welcome, welcome.
Hello, everyone. Matthew is currently doing a final, so he's not here with us. Our first announcement is that our much hyped parking voucher initiative went off really, really well. Big thank you to Curtis Brenton and the city manager's office for being so flexible and helpful. We had all seven hundred and fifty vouchers claimed with two hundred and eighty-two of those claimed in just the first nine minutes of the program. All were gone within twenty-four hours, so that was really exciting. We received lots of positive feedback from students and faculty alike, and we are excited to continue this program into next year and hopefully expand on it. Secondly, we, Matthew and I have set a date for our annual town hall event that is gonna be on February eleventh. We're looking to make it much more interactive this year. We have two tentative locations. Either we're gonna do it at the old Capitol like usual, or we might move it to our newly renovated Richie Ballroom in the I M U, which is where we've been having our senate meetings now that everything's under renovation. This is a chance to connect with a student, this is a chance to connect with a student representative body at large, and we encourage you to tell us topics that you'd like to hear about from the students. We're gonna hold an open access during a senate session prior to the event to make sure that our student leaders are well prepared for the town hall to interact with you guys. We've sent out an email to the city manager and the clerk's office, and that is all we have for you guys tonight.
Well, we wish everyone that is doing studies and finals the best, and thank you for carving out some time to come and be with us tonight. We're gonna move on to item number four, local option sales tax and other alternative revenue streams discussion, and we'll have Jeff Froy get us started.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is an item that's been on your pending work session list for quite some time. It started off as an item in your strategic plan that was originally adopted back in twenty twenty. As a reminder, your strategic plan contains a quote that's truncated here, but to consider alternative revenue sources that can help achieve strategic plan goals, fund infrastructure and facility needs, and reduce reliance on property tax. So we talk about revenue diversification quite a bit when we present the budget. We are very reliant on property taxes as cities in Iowa and particularly in Iowa City here. And some reasons to think about revenue diversification at this point and in time are listed on the screen there, state property tax reform being the first item. We've seen since twenty twenty really kind of plateaued property valuation growth. And then, of course, we've all experienced the inflationary pressures, which ultimately reduce our purchasing power here as a city, so our dollars don't stretch as much. We will talk about property tax reform quite a bit in January, so I've just put a slide here that summarizes some of the legislation that has occurred in the last ten or so years. You've heard me talk quite a bit about the twenty thirteen reform. It is important to note that that reform still is impacting us today. We have that commercial backfill payment. We'll get one more year of a partial payment in fiscal year twenty-six, and then those dollars that were promised to cities by the state back in twenty thirteen will officially be exhausted and we will no longer get that. At its peak, it was about one point five million per year for Iowa City. With this budget that we're planning, the last payment will be around three hundred thousand that we will get. There were modifications in twenty twenty-two that impacted cities, and then, of course, in twenty twenty-three, we had reform. One component of that was increased homestead exemptions with the inclusion of a new military homestead exemption as well. And for your information, we are projecting for the budget that we are preparing for starts next July, that those will result in about a four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar loss in revenue for for Iowa City. You're aware that the library and the emergency levies have been phased out. Those were producing two million dollars in annual revenue, and those are going to be phased out over the next couple of years through the combined general fund levy. And we'll we'll go through all that in detail in January. Of course, you've already heard probably plenty of of news stories as the legislators are getting ready to assemble again in January, and it appears like further property, further property tax reform is priority number one for many at the State House. So takes us to tonight, we're gonna talk about some available revenue options. Cities in Iowa do not have a whole lot of home rule flexibility when it comes to revenue sources. Those rules differ from state to state, so in some states, cities have a lot more latitude to pass different revenue sources or revenue streams. In Iowa, we're pretty limited and again, very heavily reliant on property taxes. So we're gonna talk about charges and fees for service. We're gonna talk about franchise fees, and then we'll end with the local option sales tax. But we won't spend a whole lot of time on charges and fees for service. They are pretty, you know, pretty straightforward. We can charge a cost for the services that we provide. You think about that through a lot of the enterprise funds that we we manage, the water, the sewer thing, parking is another example. We can charge to cover those costs. But we also provide a lot of services in which we don't provide, or we don't charge a fee, or we charge a fee that doesn't recoup all of our costs. So you might think about a recreation program. We may not charge the full cost of that program, and there's policy decisions that go into that. The the more cost you wanna recoup, the higher those fees are, the more barriers to participation there are. However, we can evaluate those, we can set targets and attempt to gain more revenue by increasing those fees on things like facility rentals or program registration fees. Gas and electric franchise fees. So there's a lot going on on this slide, but the city council can pass a franchise fee of up to five percent on both gas and electric. We currently have a one percent franchise fee here in Iowa City. You can see some other comparable cities on the on the chart there to your your right as well. We're generally on the low side of what cities can charge. We do anticipate recommending to you a second one percent to help sustain the fare free transit service. And if you account for that, I know that decision has not been made by by you all, but if you account for that, that would leave another three percent for for us to pursue. It generates roughly about nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars per per year. It's somewhat weather dependent, right, because it's gonna be based on usage. So if you have a very hot summer and you're running the air conditioner a lot, you're gonna have a little bit more franchise fee collection. Same in the winter, if it gets really cold and you have to run your your furnace a lot, you will pay more in those franchise fees. So you can see some variability. But even as the city continues to grow, this is a pretty flat revenue source. And that's one of the things you wanna consider with any new revenue source is what is the trend line? How volatile is that? And does it match whatever expense line you are hoping to fund? Right, this wouldn't be one in which we would necessarily want to rely on solely for a service that increases at a three or four or five percent clip every year, because eventually those expenses will will outpace the the revenue production. There are state standards at the bottom, the the final list of six bullet points there are kind of truncated from the state code, but there are certain eligible uses that is are specified in state code. I'll jump into the local option sales tax. Cities in Iowa can levy a sales tax up to one percent. It does require a voter approval, unlike the franchise fees. I didn't mention that in the last slide. Franchise fees is a decision that you can make at this D S here, but the lost has to go to a vote and you, we must secure fifty percent approval, and fifty percent of the revenue received must be allocated for property tax relief. That is a relatively new change to state law from several years ago. The last time Iowa City had this on the ballot, that was not a specified requirement. You can see, current estimate is right around eight point eight million dollars in revenue, so this revenue source is by far the the largest one available to us. And the amount of revenue will depend on the participating cities in Johnson County. So we're not going into that tonight, but understand as more cities pass a loss, there's a formula that looks at population and property valuation, and the the revenue estimate can change based on who's participating.
Quick, quick question for you. So if I'm remembering this correctly from previous conversations about lost, the fifty percent must be allocated for property tax relief. That's just in the first year, isn't it? Or?
No, that's an on, it's an ongoing requirement. However, there's no mandated tax rate that you'd have to stay at. So let's say if you were to to use the funds to lower or to avoid taxes, you wouldn't necessarily have to maintain to keeping that tax rate for the period of the lost.
So I think what I'm remembering maybe is we can't, you know, use the lost and then simultaneously increase the same amount for property taxes to offset that in the first year. That's, is that what I'm remembering? I think there was like a specific, there was, I remember in our last conversation, there was a specific prohibition on doing something, moving around funds like that in the first year.
Well, I guess I'm not sure, I'd have to look into that, but of course, based on recent state changes to the property tax code, we're pretty limited to what we can do anyway. But I can certainly answer that.
Yeah, I was just trying to remember from the last conversation we had. Thank you.
And as it required, the fifty percent of the of the vote voters, if it's on the ballot, must approve it?
That's correct, yeah.
Is it fifty-one percent or?
Yeah, just a a simple majority would.
Sure, got it.
Okay. Moving on, the the last note there is just that we're one of the few cities in Iowa that do not have a lost. You see ninety-three percent of jurisdictions have have a lost, and if you look, we'll get to some some comparable cities. It's really Iowa City and Ankeny are the two largest cities that that do not have a a local option sales tax. I wanted just to to point out a little bit, the same graph as was on the previous slide, just with some extra years on there. One of the things with sales tax is that it tends to be a little bit more volatile. So this graph can can show that. You can see there was a relatively steady increase, and then you can see a a small dip of above the twenty, in the two thousands, early two thousands there where we had a little bit of a recession. And then you see the big decline around two thousand and eight with the Great Recession there. And that's one thing you have to account for with these types of revenue sources, is that there can be large drops and large spikes in those, in in those sales. You can see we've been relatively flat or plateaued the last several, or coming out of the Great Recession, and then we start to decline down in that twenty twenty. So again, when you think of the needs that you're trying to meet, you also have to think of the trend lines and what what can be expected with sales going forward. This is the comparison you're used to seeing this in your budget presentation that we do every year in January. This is other large cities that have a lost in in the state of Iowa. You can see when it was initiated, you can see which ones have a sunset and which do not. That is your choice when you put that on the ballot. You can choose to sunset it if you want. Some choose to sunset it and believe that, you know, that's a, that's a mechanism for the public to hold them accountable to how they are utilizing those funds, and others pursue it without a sunset. Again, a lot of it's gonna depend on what you are trying to fund with this. And also just point out the the uses. So Des Moines passed in twenty nineteen, that was the first year after the state required fifty percent property tax relief. If you're looking back at those other years, you can see cities chose property tax relief back when that was not required as well. Lost has been utilized in Iowa's, in Iowa City, so after the two thousand and eight flood, we passed a four-year lost here to fund flood mitigation projects. The Dubuque Street reconstruction, the expansion of the South wastewater treatment facility in the Riverfront Crossings Park, or the decommissioning of the North wastewater plant at the time, were all uses of those lost dollars for that four-year period of time. Safe to say those projects would not have happened without the lost, and that just kind of signifies the the power of lost to fund large projects. There's no other revenue source that can that can rival lost to accomplish some of these major initiatives. The city did put lost on the ballot again in twenty fourteen. The proposal at that time was fifty percent for streets and trails, forty percent for property tax relief, and ten percent for affordable housing. It actually had more than fifty percent from the voters in Iowa City, but at that time, the state law looked at the voters of a contiguous city group, and it did not receive the same level of support in Coroville and North Liberty. All those votes were counted and tallied as one, and we we fell short of the fifty percent threshold, so no lost was was pursued, and it hasn't been placed back on the ballot since that time. There is no longer that contiguous city requirement. That was one of the changes that came five years or so ago, so we can pursue that, or any other city can pursue that alone regardless of there being contiguous cities. You know that we're just wrapping up, we've we've actually completed the community survey. We're wrapping up that final report. We'll be presenting that to you at your January seventh work session, but I am gonna share this this question. We did a custom question to probe the public's desire to to use lost for different purposes. And it's in the kind of the ranked order of whether the respondents would support lost for that purpose or not. You can see investments in streets, bridges and sidewalks received the highest percent of supporting, so that's seventy-two. And then just going down that list, investment in affordable housing came in at sixty-nine percent. Modernized parks, trails and natural areas hit sixty-two. Investment in nonprofit social services was sixty, and then thirty-nine, thirty-nine and twenty-six for the final three categories there. There is about a six percent margin of error being reported by the 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 company that did the survey for us, so you'll have to factor that in as well. But just give you a little bit of insight into how the public views the the uses of local option sales tax or potential uses.
Did we give respondents an opportunity to give their own feedback for what they'd like to see?
No, there was not an open-ended question. It was a selection.
Thank you.
The last time lost was really discussed was back in twenty twenty, or maybe even late twenty nineteen, after we completed our pavement management program. So we have a pavement management program report that is currently being updated. We should have an updated updated numbers for you this coming year in twenty twenty-five. But what this pavement management program did is it took data that's available on on pavement condition. So there's an analysis of pavement condition on all two hundred and thirty-seven miles of streets in Iowa City. It gives that a condition index, and then it helps project out based on your level of funding, whether you're going to be able to hold your level of pavement condition index, or if you're gonna start to see it slip based on inflation and other factors. When we completed the report, we received a good condition rating, and we actually perform actually well above most of our peer cities, despite the fact that a lot of our peer cities use lost for for roads. So I think we've done a a very nice job historically, keeping our our roads in relatively good repair. We all know that there's, it's a continual challenge. But the important thing that we wanted to point out with this slide is the 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 line graph on the right side. This is looking at projecting out that pavement condition index score with or without a lost. So if you look at the black line and you want to, a higher score, the better here. So the black line would just be able to maintain our funding. Most of our roadway resurfacing dollars come from the road use tax. That's the fuel pump tax, that the tax that you pay at the fuel pumps. That's a relatively fat, a flat revenue source. And so what this is saying, if you have a flat revenue source and high inflation with your cost of construction, cost of reconstruction of. your cost of construction, cost of reconstruction of roads, eventually you're not going to be keeping up. And that black line shows that by 2035, our condition index will drop from the mid 60s to the high 40s. And then it goes through various scenarios with use of lost or partial loss, partial lost. So the high purple line would be to use, at that time, all of lost for roads and maintain the existing budget that we have. Under that scenario, it was projected, we could probably maintain our existing rating there. So that's the last time that this council, many of you were not on the council at that time, but that's the last time lost was presented in a public report. And we haven't revisited it, but again, the study is being updated at this time. A couple more slides just to wrap up, and happy to answer questions and follow up with you on anything that we haven't presented. When it comes to lost, one of the things I wanted to mention again is that you really have one revenue source that can tackle your big projects. If you don't use lost for, for example, facility projects, that could be rec centers, it could be city hall, it could be any number of public facilities, then your options are very limited. You'll have to probably move to a referendum type of system in order to get those projects The utility tax, user fees, and things like that aren't going to enable you to pursue those larger projects. So when you decide to move forward with lost, you have to know that if you choose not to use it for some of those bigger initiatives, and you use it for operations or any other use, that you've really limited options going forward for future councils on how they can attack some of these larger, larger projects. The other thing is, sales tax has, again, some volatility to it. So you just want to be careful funding operations with sales tax, either because of the sunset or because of the volatility, particularly if you're looking at funding some level of operation that requires all of the projected sales tax. Because you might get 8.8 million this year, and next year might be 7 million. The year after that could be 10 million. You really want to be careful and leave yourself some cushion if you're looking at operations. And then, of course, you have to be very careful if you put a sunset date on there. The last thing I think anybody would want to do would be to create a new program, hire a bunch of staff, whether that's city staff or externally, if we're giving this money out to other organizations or sharing this with other organizations, and then have it sunset, have the voters not reapprove it, and those services that have to be withdrawn, that staff has to be eliminated. You've got to think about that as you move forward. This is all kind of repetitive here, so I'll just leave this on the screen, just some simple pros and cons with the three different revenue sources that we, that we covered. We did not talk about property tax. We're maxed out on most of our levies. The levies that we're not maxed out on have limitations, such as only being used for employee benefits, or only being used for borrowing purposes. We certainly can talk about property taxes, but most, most of the levies that would give you the discretionary dollars that you need or that you would like are going to be maxed Happy to answer any questions.
Yes, what are you looking for from us at this time?
This is really just educational. I would, I would encourage you to just kind of take this as background information. You're going to be spending hours and hours and hours jumping into the budget, starting in January, and I think this is good information to have in the background as you enter those discussions. But I'd always encourage you to think holistically about the budget when making these types of decisions. So if there's more information that we can provide to help you process what you're going to hear in January and February, that's great. But for tonight, it was mostly just to increase the level of understanding of these revenue sources.
Thanks for this. Can you go back to the Polco slides? I personally find this very, very valuable in how we determine if we do lost and how we designate those lost funds. I don't know, be curious to hear from fellow counselors if they see it the same way. I was, to be honest with you, wrong in my guesses on what this, what this poll would look like, but I have confidence that this poll is a good cross-section of our community, and we should pay attention to it.
I'd agree with that. I think that what this also speaks to is that, you know, a majority of people in Iowa City are renters. They don't own their homes. So the property tax relief section is far less impactful to them. I've said in numerous meetings before that I think the lost question is a, is a question of when, not if. And I think I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I think, you know, when, when that decision is made, I think that this just shows us that, you know, we need to be trying to mitigate the regressive wealth distribution as much as we can.
And just to respond to your comment, Counselor Mo, I think it's very telling that Iowa City residents had a two-to-one investment in nonprofit social services over property tax relief. I mean, that's a pretty stark, regardless of the margin of error, including the margin of error, it's a really stark contrast. So I agree that it's very informative, and I think it gives us a starting point in terms of, you know, investment in infrastructure being the top priority for thinking about how we're trying to expand pedestrian access and bikeways and that kind of thing as well. I had a question about the, on the pros and cons slide. Under the gas and electric franchise fees, the second bullet under the pros, can apply different rates for gas and electric or different kinds of property? So I think this was a question that we'd had a while ago, and I just want to make sure I understand this. So if, for example, in our climate action goals, we wanted to incentivize electrification, I mean, is that connecting the dots? Like if we tax natural gas or impose a higher franchise fee on natural gas than on electric? We could do that?
Yes, you can. We looked back at the last year's revenue, and again, it's, we said 980,000 is generally what the 1% on gas and electric produce. 73% of that is attributable to electric and 27% on gas. So certainly the electric produces more, but you could say, take gas to three and leave electric at one.
Okay. And then as far as the different property classifications, is that, is it really, are they, would it be the same classifications as for property tax types, like basically just commercial, industrial, and residential?
Yeah, I think the intent here would be, you know, if you wanted to charge a residential rate that's different than a commercial, industrial rate.
Okay. Thank you.
It's not surprising to see, like that survey result. Streets is one of the things that I often get from residents in our community, like, when are you going to come fix my street? So to see it as number one isn't totally shocking, but I think if I wasn't in this role, you know, as a city counselor, hearing from people, I would have never thought that would have rose to the top. But that is what's on people's mind because they experience that on a daily basis. I did want to be, just give some transparency that I have been in conversations with some community folks on lost, and Mayor Pro Tim and I do plan to attend a meeting tomorrow. Not exactly sure where that'll lead, but I think as a, as a, you know, part of this body, I need to be transparent with that. And so if something transpires, of course, we'll come and tell you, you'll hear about it. But other than that, thanks for this. It's really important that, given the financial situations that lie ahead, that we may have to, I think Counselor Don said it best, it's not a matter of if, but when we do this. And so it looks like we're nearing that time when it might be required for us to tap in to continue to provide the services that our community deserves.
So this is something that would go to the voters, and as I understand, it would, could be as soon as November of 2025. Can you give us a high-level working backward schedule of what decisions this council needs to meet and what groups we need to engage to, I mean, to get there?
Yeah, it's definitely something I would not encourage that you rush to get on the ballot. I do think that there needs to be plenty of opportunity for you to hear from, from the public, from constituent groups that may have opinions on this. And I think you probably need to get through the entire budget deliberations too. So I don't have at my fingertips the exact timeframe from when we notify the county to when this would be on the ballot, but I think your, your pegging of the November election would probably be about accurate if you get through the budget process and were able to reach a decision to place it on the ballot. You're probably looking around that timeframe. But it's more importantly, I think, I think it's most important that you feel confident about the decision that you make, and you feel confident that you've heard from the public and are putting forward something that they can support. When it comes on the ballot, we're no longer advocating, we're educating the public on what this measure is. So you'll have to kind of think about when, when the community's ready to shift from an advocacy kind of push from the government into an educational push from the government, right?
Yeah, I think I totally agree with you on that. That's what I was trying to say last time when we started talking about it. The public was almost against it. So we reach out, like, we receive a lot of feedback from the public that they, they don't like it. So I think we don't need to rush. We need to hear from the public and see like what they think about this before we can add it to any ballot, or before we can come up with a decision to add it to the ballot. That's what I think.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. All right. And Counselor Alt, just be sure to jump in. I'm not really acknowledging hands. Sometimes I forget. All right.
No worries.
All right.
No worries at all.
Great. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, which is number five, council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees.
Had a check meeting recently, have another one in December. We'll be approving the annual budget, and they'll be presenting that to the Board of Supervisors, I think, in January.
We did have a sister city initial meeting with stakeholders on Monday, December 2nd, and there were quite a few people that were invited that attended, just a few scheduling conflicts. Overall, the meeting went well, and the opportunity for formalizing some type of relationship with other communities in a usable fashion for not only them, but also for us, is of great interest. What I will say is that the finalization of this group that first met, thought it would be appropriate for us to meet again. With the, I think the thing that we're going to focus on is what would be the goal of the, you know, whatever is developed for the governance of this sister city, to try to start there. There was some mention that potentially we may ask a consultant just to come in to help us navigate that, almost free of charge or little charge. We'll find out who pays for that. But if there's no, I think it was a great initial meeting. A lot of the things that we talked about as a council were the topics that were brought up, so it was a little bit of educating on some of our discussion, revisiting some of their thoughts in, like, you know, how do we move from here? So we will have another meeting, and Kirk, who is very helpful at coordinating all of this, will send out another due to poll, and I anticipate more than likely by February, we'll have an update for you. Okay, all right. That's all I have. Any other updates from council? Here are none. We are adjourned from our work session, and we'll be back here for our formal meeting at 6:00 PM. at 6:00 PM.
All right, it is 6:00 PM on December 10th, 2024, and I'm going to call the City of Iowa City Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Alter Bergus.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Harmson.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Here.
Teague.
Here. Councilor Alter isn't able to join us. She was here virtually at our work session, but she won't be here for our meeting tonight. I wanted to welcome everyone to your City Hall, and to those that are joining us virtually, welcome as well. The second item on our agenda is an update by, a special presentation by Sarah Gartner, our Climate and Outreach Coordinator. Welcome you at this time, and that item is the Iowa City Climate Action Office Home Energy Rating Systems Grant Program. Welcome.
Thank you very much. This is a real treat for me to be here tonight and to recognize so many partners in this program. Our HERS grant program is one that was almost two years in the making and involved a number of conversations with builders, realtors, energy raters, and our own inspection staff to bring it into being. It launched in June, and we've had more success with it than we could have anticipated, which we're happy to share with you tonight. This program incentivizes building to a higher standard than the state code currently. It uses a system known as the HERS Energy Rating System, which not only helps us gauge using third-party verification the performance of the home, but also gives realtors and homebuyers an easy-to-understand metric to understand what they're going to be spending on energy costs or what they're going to be saving in energy costs when they purchase these particular homes. Every point in the scoring system, it represents being 1% more efficient. So I have been telling people all year long, it's like golf, the lower the score, the better. And our award, which set the threshold at 52 or better to receive the grant, represents a 20% efficiency over homes that are built to the current Iowa State Code. I want to start by saying critical to the success of this program has been the Home Builders Association, which partnered with us to help launch the program during the Parade of Homes earlier this year. Here tonight is Ally Salo, Executive Officer of the HBA, so a big thank you to Ally, both for her ongoing support and for coming out tonight. During the Parade of Homes, two outstanding Parade Homes actually qualified for the award. One was our Housing Fellowship Student Build Project, which got a fantastic score of 46, and then Advantage Homes, which received a score of 43. So both of those homes exceeded our expectations in the parade, which gave us a really strong start. Advantage actually has since been in contact with us and has told us they intend to submit every home that they construct going forward for this award, and that the small grant amount of $1,800 actually is enough to help them further their electrification goals for their properties, which is really wonderful. Since the parade, the program has just continued to pick up momentum. In September, we gave out our first Repeat Builder Award, a builder who submitted for award once before and then got a second home in, and that was Navigate Homes. We're joined tonight by Gina Landau, representing Navigate, so we were very excited to get a repeat performer so early in the program. Thank you, Gina, for that. And then in October, we gave an award for our first multifamily residence. We had a townhome built by Bedrock Builders qualify. And what was so great about that particular townhome is that the builder, Andy Bakinsted, had actually tried to submit for the award once before, and that property didn't quite qualify, but he took what he learned in his conversation with the energy raider and applied it to the next property that he completed and was able to get an award for that. Actually, just this week, he became our first three-peat participant. So that's four different properties that he tried to engage with this award and three that got the awards. He also told me that he has since started working with a younger builder who he's been coaching and what he has learned working with the energy raters and is encouraging the builder he's working with to apply for the award in the future as well. So just wonderful. But tonight, we're here to recognize the builder who achieved the best score in 2024. And I should say, in some ways, this could not have come as a surprise because when we announced the program in June, Stephen Christopher of ICH called up our office and said, "I am going to win the best-scoring home in the, in the community," and boy, did he. As a reminder, we asked for homes to achieve a score of 52 or better to qualify. His home got an amazing score of 32. So we were asking for 20% better than Iowa State Code. He got 20% more efficient even than that. And he did it using a truly revolutionary construction technique that we haven't seen here in the city before of using insulated concrete forms, which create not only an incredibly efficient home, but one that is also very resilient in the face of increasing climate-charged extreme weather events. So I am so tickled to call Stephen to the podium tonight and present him with an award for achieving the best score. And I know he had a word or two he wanted to say to you as well.
Great. Welcome and congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. My project, it took a little bit of planning. I think to achieve a score like this, it does take a lot of planning from the onset, actually before the project even starts. So it needs to be a goal, I guess, is what I'm getting at. And it took a lot of work. I know the grant helped supplement some of the extra work. I'm looking forward to do the next project and would be willing to help anybody that has any questions about how I achieved, you know, the score that I did. So that's about it.
Great, thank you. And thanks to Sarah and all the work that you and your staff and commission do. We really appreciate that. And thanks to all of them that joined today as well. We're on to item number three, Proclamations 3A is Human Rights Day. Whereas December 10th marks the 76th anniversary of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights adopted by the United Nations General Assembly on that date in 1948. United Nations General Assembly on that date in 1948. And whereas recognition of the inherent dignity and inalienable rights of all members of the human family is the foundation for freedom, justice, and peace in the world. And whereas the violation and disregard of human rights have led to cruel acts that have shocked the moral conscience of humanity. And whereas to prevent people from being forced as a last resort to fight against tyranny and oppression, human rights must be safeguarded by the rule of law. And whereas the United Declaration of Human Rights is a common standard of human rights for all peoples and nations. And whereas in 2024, human rights abuses continue to take place both globally and domestically, demanding ongoing investigation and support for those whose rights are violated. And whereas the enjoyment of human rights should be not taken for granted as it demands constant vigilance against potential threats. Continued progress in safeguarding these rights require unwavering commitment to protect them from emerging challenges, whether they arise from political, social, or economic pressures. Every effort must be made to ensure that human rights are upheld for all and that any erosion of these rights is swiftly addressed and rectified. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2024, to be Human Rights Day in Iowa City. And to receive this proclamation is Barbara Eckstein, Board President of Johnson County UNA Association.
Thank you for this. It means a lot to us, and this day means a lot to us. We're actually commemorating Human Rights Day next Tuesday with a roundtable discussion about the state of human rights locally, and I want to invite you all to this event. We have invited a number of nonprofit organizations that, over the last few years, Johnson County UNA has fundraised for through our Night of a Thousand Dinners event. And I want to tell you who those nonprofits are who've accepted our invitations, so I might entice you to join us next Tuesday at the Public Library. They are the Center for Worker Justice, Community Food Bank, the Coralville Food Pantry, Domestic Violence Intervention Program, Field to Family, Houses into Homes, Inside Out Reentry Community, Open Heartland, Sankofa Outreach Connection. So I do hope you'll join us for this conversation. Our intention is to listen to these partners and help, help them do the work that they need to do to protect human rights here at home. So 6 o'clock next Tuesday, Public Library here. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. And you have some people back there, so thanks for joining as well. We are going to move on to our consent agenda, which is items four through nine. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Saleh.
Anyone from the public in person like to address anything on our consent agenda? Seeing no one in person or online. No hands raised online. Counsel discussion? Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. We're on to item number 10, which is Community Comment. This is an opportunity for folks to speak on an item that is not on our agenda. If you're in person and you want to speak to an item that is not on our agenda, will you please raise your hand at this time? Seeing no one in person, we're going to move on to items 11, Planning and Zoning Matters, 11A, zoning code amendment, tobacco sales-oriented retail uses. Ordinance Amending Title 14 and Title Zoning Code to address tobacco sales-oriented retail uses. Can I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion? Counsel discussion? All right. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Saleh.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. We are on to item number 12, which is our regular formal agenda, 12A, prohibited conduct on public buses. Ordinance Amendment Title 6 and Title Public Health and Safety, Chapter 8 and Title Prohibited Conduct on Public Buses, Section 1 and Title Definitions to Remove for Affair Language, and Section 2 and Title Prohibited Acts, to Update Language and Add Additional Prohibited Acts. This is the first consideration. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second, Saleh.
Yep, moved by Mo, seconded by Saleh. And welcome our staff, Darian.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Darian Nagelgam, Director of Transportation Services. The item before you tonight is our, we're seeking to amend the city code sections that outline prohibited conduct on public buses. And we're really doing this in an effort to make sure that our passengers and our operators or our drivers operate within a safe, clean, and comfortable environment. You may be aware that transit agencies across the United States are seeing an uptick in, I would say, concerning behavior or prohibited conduct. And it's probably not just affecting transit. You're hearing it from the service sector as well. And it's really been a kind of a societal shift post-pandemic. So we've been really looking for ways that we can help better support our staff and better support our passengers onboard. We've done a number of things. We've been focusing on de-escalation training, incident response protocols to make things more predictable and reliable for our staff. We're looking at some other different measures, such as driver barriers between the driver's cab area and passengers, and handheld radios for kind of more private phone conversations. Another thing that we've been looking for is to better educate the public about what the expected behavior is and what the code of conduct is onboard. So we've been looking to work with our communications team to help post some new signage. If you've been on our buses, you'll see kind of, there's a lot of signs that have some of that code of conduct posted, but they're kind of black and white. There's a lot of words that might actually be hard for people to read from, from their seats. So we've been looking into refreshing that signage. And while we did so, we realized that our code of conduct within the actual city code could use a refresher. Some of the language needs to be modernized, and we're also proposing a few additions to, so that we can, again, better take this information, update the code, and then publish it in a way and educate the public on what the standards of conduct are. In terms of the enforcements of these mechanisms, how these rules are generally enforced onboard is, as our drivers will, will give a warning if somebody is, you know, boarding a bus with playing music out loud, or if there's some other code of conduct violation. The driver does reserve the right by code to, to tell someone to leave the bus if they continue to violate the code of conduct and they've given them proper warning. What happens more often than not is they will call a supervisor to come assist, and the supervisors can help take the passenger off-board and kind of take the time to explain the, the rules of the road, the rules of riding onboard, the code of conduct. And then, you know, if it's something that rises to a more serious level, sometimes we reach out to PD for assistance. So that's really how the enforcement piece works. Tonight, in terms of the code sections we're proposing for updates, first off, Section 681, a small tweak to that section. It does specify currently that public transportation services are sort of defined by services that are provided, transportation services that are provided with affair. So because of our unique environment, unique and wonderful environment here in Iowa City, we propose to delete for affair. So that just, it just ensures we all have the understanding whether there's affair or not, what public transportation is, and that this applies to public transportation. In terms of the outlined acts, I just want to briefly walk through the proposed changes with you. First off is expanding the smoking prohibition to include the use of smokeless tobacco, electronic cigarettes, and vaping devices. Vaping is what we would probably be enforcing most often on buses nowadays. We rarely see somebody, you know, walk onboard with a cigarette nowadays or light a cigarette onboard, but we do see vaping violations. So we wanted to modernize and update that section of the code. We also want to and need to update the language regarding the prohibition of sound amplification devices. We really want everybody to be able to have kind of a peaceful traveling environment. And, you know, if you're, if you're playing music, your own music out loud, it can be disruptive for the driver and for other passengers. To give you an idea of when this code was first written, we referenced tape players, record players, and CDs weren't even mentioned. So it was, must have predated CDs, which are now kind of gone by the wayside. But really, we wanted to focus mostly on phones, which is really where most of the music amplification comes from. We also wanted to clarify that pets or animals are not allowed, but we've always indicated that animals trained to assist persons with disabilities are exempted. But we wanted to clarify that service animals are exempted. We just wanted to be, we wanted to be, we wanted to make sure we had that word in there. We also wanted to expand the definition of prohibited conduct to include harassment and bullying. We think it's very important to outline those. Those are things, I would say it's more of a modern focus on those two items. We want to be clear about that those are not acceptable onboard transit. And then the last two items are really adding language. So the first is adding language that indicates that loitering is prohibited on the bus, and we define that as remaining on the bus for more than one continuous trip or riding on the transit system continuously in excess of two hours without exiting the system. Now, this is, this is as long as, I guess, I would say our longest-tenured employee has been with Iowa City Transit. This has been a policy, an internal policy that we have enforced. And we've done this to prevent people from literally just riding transit to ride transit all day. It's really more of a capacity issue than it is anything else to encourage people, to encourage us to connect people to their destinations, but not necessarily be that destination where people are riding all day. Sometimes we've, we've had to enforce this with, let's say, teenagers. There's been occasions where people have been sleeping on the buses, and this gives our drivers some confidence that they can address people who are clearly riding just to ride. So it's been a longstanding policy that we have been using amongst our staff. And honestly, this was probably the thing that our, our drivers were the most concerned about or apprehensive about with going fare-free, and it hasn't proven to be a serious issue. I would say we occasionally need to, to enforce this policy. That isn't the case in all communities that have fare-free. So I think that our community does a good job of providing services or making sure people have places to go, say, places to go. So it's not something that we have to enforce probably more than occasionally.
Can you just tell me again, if you can repeat it again, because I want to know exactly, you said if they ride and they did not get on the final destination, that's what you're talking about?
Yes. So it's, it's defined as remaining on the bus for more than one continuous trip. So if we, for example, if we pick up, somebody boards at the interchange and they rode the whole route, came back to the interchange, then our driver might say, "Hey, do you have another destination to get to? We have a policy that..." If they were, if they were basically going to take another trip on the same, on the same route. Does that make sense? So you can ride one trip from start to finish, but we don't allow for more than one trip from start to finish. Now, if that person got off the bus and went in to the next bus over and, and did a route on that bus, so let's say there was two hours in a row, then if they tried to ride a third time, then a driver might say to them, "Hey, I noticed that you've, you've been on the system for the last two hours. We do have a policy against, you know, remaining on this transit system consecutively for more than two hours." Does that make sense?
How do our drivers even know? Like, not, not the, the, obviously like staying on the bus, but like, if you're moving from route to route to route to route, how would they even know?
It would be difficult for us to know if, if they're switching between drivers. I think it's, it's been very rarely, I would say the, in terms of the enforcement of this policy, it's usually people staying on the same bus for more than one trip. It's very rare that we have enforced people switching between trips all day, unless there's some problematic behavior, and then that's likely, that might bring our attention to it. But it's usually then that problematic behavior that we're enforcing.
Have we tried to address or figure out why that is happening? When I see somebody staying in the bus, did not get off and ride again, as I don't have, just like cold days, homeless, somebody like keep like warm inside the bus, or with the reasoning? I think before we can, like, yes, I don't know, is this a fine or what it is if the, if they done that?
So it, let me look at the, there is a enforcement mechanism. So the violations could be enforced by police issuing a simple misdemeanor citation or filing of a municipal infraction, but I don't know if I know of any time in history that that's ever been done for these situations. It's usually talk to the person, again, find out, can we help get them where they need to go? That's usually the conversation that is had. And if we can connect them to services, if it's something that the street outreach team can help us with, and that's, that's who we, that's our go-to. If it's, sometimes people do fall asleep on the bus and they're, you know, they've been awake and, "Where am I? And this is where I need to get?" They help to connect them to where they're going. Or if it's, you know, if it's somebody who's underage, we might offer to connect them to a parent or they might, this driver might call a supervisor and have a supervisor try to locate or get this person where they need to go. So those are the type of ways we, we try to address it when it does happen.
Yeah, you mean, you know, like, if they stayed on the bus and the bus reached the final destination, they were asleep, they did not get off because they missed their station, that's easy, they can come back.
Yeah.
With the same bus.
Yeah.
Say, "Oh, I missed my destination, so I will get off maybe another two destinations" or something like that. But I really just like feel we need, if something like this happened, even though it said like it's really weird, but if something like this happening, we need to address it. We need to know why it's happening. You know, right now, we have a lot of people on the street, and it's cold. So I don't know if the people just riding on the bus because they don't have homes and they just stayed there. And, and I don't think it's like really, our bus is like very, very full to the degree that we have to get off. We have to force people to get off so we can have somebody. But this is, this law or this policy will be implemented regardless if the bus like empty or half-full. And that's, that's a problem to me.
I guess, I, I kind of also share a little bit of concern from that, you know?
We're asking questions at this time. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, yeah. And my, so I'm just sharing that and then asking a question about that. So what, what would be the expected procedure if someone were to just like miss their stop on accident? Like, I guess like the concern for me is like, this makes it misdemeanor if it's an honest mistake. Like, why are we wanting to elevate this from an internal policy to a crime?
I think the, it seemed to, it seemed to be the best fit for the code of conduct versus administrative rules, which is the next item, because we want to, and we want to be public-facing with it. We don't have it posted in our bus. Actually, I take that back. We do have it posted, but we have an old version posted in our bus that was more applicable under our old system. But we want to, we want to make it, we want to make it, we want to impress upon, upon the public that it's, we, sorry. We think it's important. We think it is best fit for the code section versus the administrative rules. Ultimately, we want to, because it's public-facing, it's a public-facing policy, we want to be upfront and communicate it to the public. Like I said, it doesn't happen very often, but we want to make sure that it's, it's codified either in our administrative rules or in our code of conduct.
But why is this the best place for us?
Well, in theory, it could be, it could be in our policies, which is where it's been. It could be, it could be in the administrative rules, which are just now being established. We haven't had the administrative rules. That is an option for us. Or it could show up in the code. So there's, those are the three options that we have.
But why are we choosing this one?
That was the decision when I discussed this with our representative from the city attorney's office, that seemed like the best fit in terms of the content of that administrative rule.
Contextual.
Administrative, excuse me, our administrative rules are more specific. Administrative, excuse me, our administrative rules are more specific to, less things you'd see in the code, more things like the size of carry, and the number of carry-on bags. Like, that's kind of the level of detail in the administrative rules, and then usually in the code sections, it's more kind of the high level. That's my understanding, if I got that right, Eric.
I think the short answer is just to be transparent. This is, this is what, this is what the rule is, and let's just be transparent with it. It's not a change in practice. It's, we're not looking to issue citations. I would be shocked if we ever issued a citation for that particular item, really for any of these. As Darian mentioned, you know, if you've been, some of you've been on council for, for some time, I don't think you've ever had a complaint from somebody getting a citation for loud music or for even bullying or harassment. We generally can take care of those without getting to that level. But we're trying to be transparent. We're trying to let the public know what the rules are and ultimately protect the other passengers and the drivers from some of the escalating behaviors is the intent of this.
I just have a quick question for the city attorney to clarify, something that councillor Dunn said, as far as this question of escalating it to a crime. My understanding from reading this is that anything in what we may be approving, a violation thereof, just like any code violation, could be enforced by the police. Is that correct?
Yes, the penalty in violation provision is in 684, and as Ms. Nagelgam mentioned, it's either a simple misdemeanor or municipal infraction, much like nearly everything else in our code.
Every other part of the code?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So it's not just, it's not different than any other code violation that the police could enforce? Is that, not any other, but it is the
That's largely true.
Typical code violation enforcement?
I agree with that, yes.
Thank you.
And that's considered crime?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
I said, is that considered crime, like criminal record for them?
A simple misdemeanor is a criminal offense. A municipal infraction is a civil penalty, yes.
Okay.
Just like speeding is a simple misdemeanor, any number of other things in our code.
Yeah, but we cannot compare this to speeding. Like, even if we talked about, you know, speeding or driving violations, for example, like we'll give you one example for immigrants. Oh, it's not a question, but we can't talk about that during discussions, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Here are no other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this item? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. In person, please step up to the mic. See no one in person or online. Counsel discussion.
Yeah, for me, I really just concern, you know, like talking about bullying, talking about harassment, talking about all this, you know, I, yeah, I'm fine with them, but, and also, you know, as the city manager said, this is happening rarely. I have, I never like had somebody complain about, that's happened actually, or been enforced. And I also could have like some kind of, yeah, pressing that, they, you know, the city will take everything that in their toolbox before they can make it like call the police or before they can, as you said earlier, you call the supervisor first and you try first to talk to the person, and after that, if things escalated, call the supervisor, supervisor might make him calm down and things will be resolved. And also like, you know, the last thing, that is something really, really big. After that, we involve the local enforcement, which is great. We are using all the tools in our toolbox. But you come to like just person sitting there without doing anything, and for example, if I don't find any place to stay and I don't have money and now our bus is fully just happy in the bus. So it was very raining or it was like snowing or anything, just to protect myself and sitting there quietly, and after that get like this, I, I, I guess I'm not feeling comfortable putting that code and like putting that, I don't know, on the code. Anyway, I don't know, putting that on the code, that's what I, I mean. If we can take that out, would be great. So, and, and you just said, it's not happening, it's rarely happening, why we have it there. Let us like solve our like problem of homelessness. I think that's the only cause, will cause somebody just to ride around and because they don't have a place to stay during that time. I don't know, but I just don't feel comfortable leaving that there, and especially if they are peaceful, because if they are not peaceful, you're gonna like do everything else, like calling the supervisor, doing that. It's not going to be concerned about like riding in the bus to just stay in the bus.
Yeah. I, I share your feelings pretty much completely. I don't think that it makes sense if, I, I don't think that there's a justification for this to need to be here to be a misdemeanor or municipal infraction. If it's not something that we're already pressing right now, if it's something like a, a policy that, I, I agree with the intent of the policy to make sure that we have people, you know, rotating on our services, but I have not been given to a satisfactory degree a reason for me to believe that it should be elevated to this extent to allow interaction with like law enforcement personally. I mean, I understand the argument that it makes sense to be here, but there's no substantive or material change to how it would be enforced, aside from potentially getting law enforcement involved. And given that it's not generally happening now, I just don't see it as necessary. Everything else, totally cool. Also, want to keep enforcing the policy the way it is now, but in terms of like adding it to this particular code section, I don't support that.
I have a question for both of you. So if it, if it's not in the administrative rules and it's more kind of internal, how can we share that with the public for transparency?
I think we just, we have it posted that this is an internal policy and you're not allowed to do that.
Mm-hmm. And I guess I'm, I'm very, you know, like concerned about things become like criminal record for people. Do you know that, you know, talking about speeding, you know, yes, it's speeding, but for example, immigration, when you apply for the citizenship, they will ask you everything I say, like exclude driving violations. So they will exclude that, but everything else, we are not gonna give you the pass to citizenship. And why we add those simple things for our resident to be like criminal record? And especially like this time, there is many thing, well, you know, if you have small misdemeanor, which is criminal record, now you can be deported, you can, a lot of things going to be really bad on the next year. If we can minimize, like making people having criminal record will be great. So, and who is going to have this? Our vulnerable population, the people who are in the street, the people who are immigrants, the people who are undocumented, the people who are just really vulnerable, that's why they will be like falling into this. So I, I just, I don't like the, if the people are peaceful to be just giving tickets because they're out in the bus twice.
I also am not in favor of elevating things to crimes or criminalizing peaceful behavior, and I just think if, if anyone wishes to offer an amendment to this, two things. Number one, the second part in here is establishing that any violation of the administrative rules would have the same impact, right? That is subsection N, failure to comply with administrative rules established by the transportation director. So that would catch if it's just, yes, everything else that's not part of the ordinance. And if overall, as the city attorney just spoke to, there are so many more things that if we are not wanting to allow law enforcement to enforce through making something a simple misdemeanor, that's a much, much bigger issue that I'm grateful to hear you talking about, and I hope that if my colleagues are on board with, with that, that it would be a, a different kind of approach, because I, I think, I think it speaks to the fact that most of our community would not understand that code violations could be
Yes.
Criminal, right? And I completely appreciate what our transportation director said, and, you know, we've had these conversations around policing as well, that that's not going to be the first option, right, to enforce through making, you know, charging a crime. But I just want to make sure everyone up here understands that that's the status quo for a lot of what's on the books. So I think we would probably want, for consistency's sake, some kind of justification for our understanding of making it different or exempting it somehow.
Mm-hmm.
Question, do we have, I guess this was something unclear to me, do we have administrative rules right now, or is this creating the ability to create administrative rules, and are those separate from the policies that we operate currently under?
Well, it's, perhaps Ms. Nagelgam would be better equipped to answer this than me, but it's my understanding, we presently have administrative rules, and, and I'll offer my agreement with councillor Burgess in both of the last points she made. The first being that if you were to delete section M, speaking about the more than one continuous trip, but the, you know, not engaging in more than one continuous trip remained in the administrative policy, someone could just still be prosecuted, not that I think that's ever likely to happen, but could still be prosecuted under what is presently labeled N, would then be probably amended to M if you were to eliminate M. And I agree with councillor Burgess's second point too, in that we've got a whole bunch of things that are, if you violate city code, that, you know, there's one of two remedies. It's either municipal infraction or a simple misdemeanor. That's just the underlying foundation of our, of our code. And so if, if you were to decide that, that as a council, we didn't like that, that would require wholesale provisions to our city code.
I appreciate your perspective on who these people and giving a sort of idea of who these people who might be riding the bus longer than what we would expect are, and I'm very sympathetic towards that specifically in the context of immigration. So I would support just getting rid of the section M, striking that. And then our transportation director is here, she hears this conversation, our city manager and attorney is here, I think they understand, yes, the purpose of transportation, our buses is for buses, and there are situations where we might need to do more, and I think they will. So I'd support getting rid of M, I would not support getting rid of N.
So moved.
Yeah. Second amendment.
So moved by Dunn, second by Sala to remove M.
But not N.
But not N.
Just, just M right now.
You can see it.
Counsel discussion on this amendment. Roll call, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. All right, so we are now back to the original with the amendment, and that is our vote at this time. Any other comments?
We've got a weird administrative comment. Do we have to change it from N to M?
Yeah, that would be a non-substantive change that we would make in the second reading, yes.
Roll call, please.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. We are on to item number 12B, which is dimensions of, for new patios and rental housing. Ordinance amending title 17, entitled Building and Housing, Chapter 5, entitled Housing Code, to clarify the dimensions of new patios in section 17-5, 17-5-18Q, and to clarify parking is not allowed on patios. This is the first consideration. Could I get a motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, second by Burgess, and we're gonna welcome Stan, our senior housing inspector. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. The ordinance before you amends the housing code to establish size limits for newly constructed patios and clarifies, as you've heard, that parking is not allowed on patios. The original section of the housing code was, that we're proposing amending, was originally enacted in 2017 to preserve open spaces and rear yards. If you remember, that's when the state changed our, or removed our ability to regulate occupancy based off of familial status. While the original ordinance allowed paved patios, it not, did not specify size restrictions. We've had a recent challenge to that, where the court, the courts decided that we are a little ambiguous in what constitutes a patio. This amendment addresses the gap while reinforcing the prohibition on parking on patios. Any questions?
I do. What's the purpose of the language that they cannot be constructed contiguous to parking spaces?
Yeah, so enforcement is always a problem, and you run into the issue of if you have concrete, that's parking, and then a current concrete patio, and this is dealing specifically with rental property. The concern is tenants aren't going to have that information, what is parking, what is a patio? If there's a delineation between the two of those, it's a lot easier for enforcement that this is obviously parking. This is separate from the parking, and that's a patio.
Thank you.
What is the purpose for the, there's a game day exemption?
Yep.
Tailgating exemption? What's the purpose of having an exemption for that?
Sure, because enforcement on game days for this is a nightmare, and it just problematic to, to make that distinction, and we allow tailgating.
So practical.
Practical, yes.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
All right, here are no more questions. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you are online, please raise your virtual hand. If you are in person, I will call upon you. Now, I do see just one person online, but I don't see no option for a mic or a video like I normally would.
Again, that would be something they'd need to turn on on their end.
Okay, so anyone online that wish to speak, you have to turn on your
I'm sorry, if they raised their hand, I would allow them to speak, and then they would have those options.
Okay, you would have to raise your virtual hand first, and then I'll be able to acknowledge Last call for anyone in person or online to speak. I'm gonna move on to counsel discussion at this time.
Makes sense?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. 12C is our next agenda item. Lifted one, that motion passed six to zero, if I didn't, I think I said it, all right. We're moving on to 12C, lifting tobacco moratorium. This is a resolution lifted the moratorium on the issuance of new tobacco permits in Iowa City, Iowa, adopted May 7, 2024 via resolution 24-129. Could I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mo, second by Sala, and staff, it's gonna be Eric Gorres on this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, earlier this evening passed the final reading for the tobacco zoning and separation requirements, and you will recall that we began that discussion earlier this year with a moratorium on the issuance of new tobacco permits so that we could make some decisions at the council level as to what kind of regulations you wanted to see. Well, you folks have ended that process and, excuse me, and, and passed a new ordinance, and whereas the moratorium is scheduled to end on December 31st, we are aware that there are a number of sales of properties and other things like that where folks are anxious to move ahead. And so we had earlier discussed that upon the passage of the final reading of the zoning ordinance, we would lift the tobacco moratorium. It will coincide with the publication of the ordinance, not tonight, but the publication of the ordinance, because that's when the ordinance takes effect, and we want to have those line up, not have a, a gap in the lifting of the moratorium and the application of the new law. So that's what's before you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Here are none. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. See no one in person or online. Counsel discussion.
That's what we discussed.
Roll call, please.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo? Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 12D, Iowa City, 2025 State Legislative Priorities, Resolution Establishing the City of Iowa City's 2025 State Legislative Priorities. Can I get a motion, please?
Move, Sala.
Second. Mo?
All right, we're going to welcome Jeff Ron back.
Yes, thank you. So at your work session in November, you had a look at these draft legislative priorities. You directed a couple of changes which are now incorporated. That includes encouraging the state to consider regulation of kratom and also to eliminate or lower the threshold in which cities can come together to form a regional transit district. There are only two eligible metropolitan areas in the state of Iowa that are eligible based on the population threshold of 175,000 right now. And we would like the state to consider lowering that. So Iowa City Metropolitan Area and other mid-sized metropolitan areas could engage in those discussions on whether a transit district is appropriate for their communities. The rest of the legislative priorities are as you reviewed them in November and are largely the same as they have been the last few years, with one exception, that is, we have modified to match USG's legislative priorities. As those have changed, we have updated ours to reflect their priorities as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Here are no questions. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're in person, please raise your hand. Online, your virtual hand. See no one in person or online, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Sorry.
Oh, Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero. Item 12E, Update of City Council Fiscal 2023 through Fiscal Year 2028 Strategic Plan, Resolution Adopted and Updated to the Iowa City City Council Strategic Plan for Fiscal Years 23 through 28. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Burgess?
Second. Sala?
All right, moved by Burgess, seconded by Sala, and we'll invite Jeff Ron again.
Okay, another quick one here, at least as far as my report goes. The current strategic plan was adopted in December of 2022. And just last October, you all spent several hours in this room reviewing that strategic plan and considering some updates that were suggested to you by the staff. Most of those updates I would characterize as clarifying or trying to account for new things that we did not anticipate back in the original adoption. A good example might be the pro housing grant award or the acquisition of 21 South Lynn Downtown. We've incorporated those types of items. A council did direct that we include an update to the Climate Action Plan with an additional focus on resilience, and that is now listed in the strategic plan and is something that we will consider in the coming years. The strategic plan is attached to the agenda item, and I'm happy to clarify or answer any questions on the changes that were made. You can see the staff report that Kirk put together that summarizes them in each of the categories.
Any questions for Jeff? Hearing now from the council. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? See no one in person or online, council discussion.
I just want to say that every time I look at the strategic plan, I'm really proud of us, and I hope that members of the public do take the time to go to icgov.org/strategicplan. I'm sure the new one will be updated shortly in the next, you know, sometime soon with the amendments that we're making to update it. And also, just we, I've been really impressed with the process and the fact that we all, you know, came back together and had input from new counselors that weren't involved in the 2022 plan and that we were right at the two-year mark in doing that. So let's just, congratulations to us. It's a good feat.
Thanks to the city manager's office and the EC cog for facilitating that day where we got around, and thanks to my fellow counselors for having us do this. You'd already been through it once, but for the benefit of new counselors, I strongly support doing that so we're all on the same page and sort of are rowing in the same direction. So thanks to everyone. With those comments in mind, I would just say we should put a pin in our little memories to maybe think about 2026, doing this again, because we'll have council elections next year, potentially some new faces again. Plus, we'll have a special election, so I guess we could, you know, definitely we'll have at least one new face, and so like every other year might be a, might be a cycle that would be productive. Just a thought.
Yeah. I'm very excited, too, because of the metrics that we have, some metrics there, so we're going to be, measure our progress in certain stuff. So this is amazing. Thank you for everybody who worked on theirs.
All right, roll call, please.
Burgess?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes, motion passes six to zero. Item 12F, TRC Extension, Resolution Extending the Timeframe for the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission to Complete Its Final Report. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Moved by Burgess.
Second, Sala.
Seconded by Sala, and I'm going to invite the TRC Vice Chair Lauren Merritt, and Lou Tassini is also here from the TRC as well. So welcome to both of you.
I need to sign in.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, you don't need to sign in.
Okay, good.
No, no, yes. Welcome.
It's been a long time coming.
Yes.
As you know, it's been, you know, quite some time we've been working on this. We're getting to the final stages, and we recognize that as much effort that the commissioners have put into this, we are limited and to the ability to actually write this report, especially to the caliber that we're, would like to present for the city of Iowa City. So we agree that having someone who can dedicate all their time to writing the report, we select somebody, but we also know that that person would have to have a contract set up with the city attorney. And not knowing how long that part would take, and then actually writing the report, we realized that we needed some more time, which is why we had requested this additional time just for writing the report.
All right, any questions for the TRC members? Here are none. Thank you both. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're in person, please step up to the mic. If you're online, please raise your virtual hand, and I'll acknowledge you. Yes, welcome. And we ask that you sign in and state your name and city you're from, and you'll be granted up to three minutes to speak.
Okeydoke. Great to see you. Good. Great to see you all. Okeydoke. Well, I'm calling, I'm here to support the TRC getting an extension.
And please state your name and city you're from.
Oh, thanks. Annie Tucker, Iowa City.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm already using up my time. So when George Floyd was murdered in June 2020, that was considered the largest, most diverse movement in U.S. history. And those protests raised issues of systemic racial inequity to all America and to the world and initiated changes. For example, initially, we saw corporations offering DEI and making sure that their customers knew that, right? We also had you all, sorry, let's see, you all created a TRC here. And to the public who has not read your Resolution 20228, it is like one of the most inspiring things that you can read about any place, but it's about this place. And three of you were on the council at that point and voted for it. So you want to raise your hand to get acknowledged for voting for it? You don't have to.
You can speak to the council.
Okay, great. Okay, so, so information is power. And when the American people saw the murder and found out more about systemic racial inequity, they were angry and they wanted change. Okay? And now, fast forward to now, there are people who want that baked in inequity, and they are wanting to erase people's understanding of it by getting rid of DEI, right? So it's hard to know whether to read or free, it's kind of free flow. So that's the climate in which we're living. So the work of the Iowa City TRC is more important and more at risk than ever for you all to take a stand to want to know what's happening in this community, where the inequity is, and when then, and then be charged yourselves with figuring out what to do about that. That is powerful. And so I just want to remind you that in Section C of the TRC duties that are laid out in Resolution 20228, one of the, one of the duties is to identify and recommend to the city council institutional and policy reforms. That's where racism lives, in the law, in policies and practice. Please let them have an extension to give you recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. See no one in person or online, council discussion. So I want to say thanks to Commissioner Merritt and for Commissioner Tassinari being here today. Really appreciate you all coming before the council and just having this discussion. I want to first give gratitude for all of the commissioners, past and present. And as we just heard from the comments, Iowa City in 2020, we were the ones in our community that made a bold statement that we wanted to ensure that we have something in place to help us to facilitate the change that we want to see. And so to all the TRC commissioners that are ever served, we, I want to personally say thank you for your service. In this moment, I know that the TRC, as it was mentioned, their last task is to write or submit a final report to the, to the council. And I think it was stated that that's something that they need to contract for, fully understandable, and was totally expected. And so what I would say to my colleagues at this time, as well as to the TRC, I fully want to see that final report and for the council to have that. But I do believe that this can be achieved with the person that's, the TRC members have already mentioned that they want to hire. And at this moment, I think if the council desired just to kind of give a thumbs up to that final report, the person that is, you know, needs to sign some contracts to present that, but I would, I would be fully supportive of it, and I would ask my colleagues to be fully supportive of it. Now, I do want to say that because that is the last step, extending the TRC, I won't support at this time beyond the December 31st. But the good news is, is that we'll still, if this passes and, or if we give the thumbs up by all of the commissioners or council, I do believe that the final report can be finalized, and should the members wish to contribute to that, because I know that's a part of it, you will be absolutely able to contribute to that final report without some of the governmental restraints of quorum and all of that stuff. I know that there is no more activities scheduled, which we appreciate you all kind of navigating some of that. So at this point, I just wanted to talk to my fellow colleagues to see if you all would be amendable to the TRC members submitting, or this person being hired for the final report, even if the commission, you know, ended or allowed their present time to end and expire on December 31st, 2024. Wondering if people would be amendable to that individual still working on the report and submitting that to the council. Okay, so do see some agreements there. And other than that, I really do want to say thank you to all of the commissioners, especially the ones that are here currently. I see you everywhere. So really appreciate you all being very visible and engaged in the community, and I am almost certain that we'll continue to see that and really appreciate what you all done. Again, it is, the item that's before us is really the TRC extension, to be clear. I won't vote for the extension. I'll allow the time to expire, but I am fully in support of receiving that final report from the person that is hired. Yes.
Mayor, I just want to echo the gratitude that you voiced for the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Its four years have been tumultuous and difficult, and at times so inspiring and so incredible, and at times so hard and even harmful. And I know that the work the commission did, and particularly for those who had the opportunity to serve on the commission, it has left a significant imprint on their lives. I struggle with the idea of having the TRC sunset because of its importance, because of the, the promise that we made to ourselves at that time in 2020. I do, in understanding from the commissioners, that they don't have additional activities planned, that the intention is to, would be to finish out the final report, I would be in favor of what you're presenting, Mayor. I think it's, there's a lot of, I could see a lot of benefit in being able to have the end of the formal commission and the opportunity then to have the report and recommendations written from that perspective, that the commission existed in this time, in this place, in these circumstances, and from that, these are the, the policy recommendations. And also just memorializing the work of the commission, what happened in the commission. And I think we have acknowledged here publicly, and I've heard it numerous times at the commission, that the work that we tasked them with was largely impossible and often unsupported and at times undermined. And so I do think that, that what you proposed, Mayor, is a reasonable way to acknowledge all of that and allow for the sun setting of this project, and knowing that Iowa City remains committed, as it says in our, every, every document on every screen, to social justice and racial equity, and that we will not forget what the commission was tasked with and all of its accomplishments.
Yeah, I think the mayor and Counsel Burgess, you guys said, studied beautifully. And of course, I will share the same thing that, yeah, this is, was not, you know, easy for you guys. It was tough. But also just like a lot of gratitude to the present and the previous commissioner. It wasn't easy, but you navigated through, and thank you so much for your work. And I will be in favor also of, like, you know, maybe not extend it, but let the report, you know, the person who write the report continue. And I believe this is all... And I believe this is also not, unless somebody's really insisted to do it, maybe we can't talk. But I think this is a reasonable now, since, as you know, Council Burgas says, there is no more activity has been, like, set to be done. Then, yeah, this is a reasonable way to end it.
Just echo my fellow counselors in saying thank you. This is or was an historic commission and deserves to be memorialized in a document. So, I appreciate that we'll have someone synthesize all of the content, because there's a lot of it, because you guys put in a lot of time. It'll be good for all of us to have that synthesized and saved for the record. But then also, we can look back at it and use it in the future, hopefully. So, thank you for your time. And I also will support allowing the TRC to sunset, but continue on the work of documenting all of your work.
Just kind of one extra plug, so everyone else said thank you. One of the things that I have been impressed with is the number of people on the TRC who were community members who gave of themselves because they care about this community and the things that are important to the people of this community. I would just throw out there as an idea, take a well-deserved break or rest. And then, we have a lot of other commissions and boards that do all kinds of good work in this community. And having had that experience, you know, I'm kind of hoping in the future, I'll see some names on board and commission applications come across my desk. And so, I just want to encourage, with a well-reserved break, I wouldn't want to force anybody to jumping right back into the melee. But certainly, when people are ready, I will look forward to that. So.
Thank you all.
We've actually ended that opportunity?
It's just for clarification about the date.
So, I think I hear clarification of date?
Yes.
Yes, all right. That would be helpful, yes. So, I guess the question is clarification of date of when the final report is expected? I think, at least from my perspective, we know that there will be some contract working out. We don't know how long that'll take. But I heard from the commission that they needed two months, the person needed two months to work on the report. And then, about a month, I think for the commission to kind of finalize it or the, for input, I guess, from the public or whomever want to finalize it. So, I would say three months from when the contracts are signed, because we know that can take some time, too. So, let's be very clear that from the date of the contract, three months. And I know that the commissioners have one more meeting before the year is out on the 19th of December. And so, that'd be something you all can certainly discuss. All right?
I would just maybe offer that if, in the negotiating of the contract, you know, not knowing the details of it, if those, if the individuals who are doing the work think it may be more time, I mean, I hate to limit it to 90 days, but within reasonableness, I think the commission said six months on the outset or on the outside. And so, we do want a deadline, but I think nothing too strict if that, like, since we're not voting on it anyway.
Yeah, we're not voting on it. So, I think if we're comfortable, I hear the six month that they suggested, if we're comfortable, if we really throw it back to the commission, they'll be listening to this, and I'm sure the two that are here today will take it back from the date of the signing of the contract, around 90-ish days is what...
Because I think that when the commissioner said six months, they include that, the time of looking for someone and signing the contract and everything. Like, you just said, from the date of signing the contract. So, I think the commissioner, when they said six months, they include everything. Like, from now, from it is the day that the commission end until the day that, you know, they finished, they said six months. So, reasonable three months, three months-ish.
Ish.
So, yeah. Is with that ish, if that ish needed, okay.
All right.
The city attorney will love that.
I may not use the term maybe-ish in the contract, but I will convey that as soon as practicable.
Well, it will be 60 days for the individual to kind of submit the initial report. All right. Anything else for my fellow colleagues? Hearing nothing else? All right. Just so that the folks that are present know, the vote that we're taking is for the TRC extension. And from what we've heard from myself and my colleagues, we're going to allow that date to sunset. And so, the item before us, should it go through, it will be a no vote for the extension. So, I just wanted to make that clarification. All right. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
No.
Harmson.
No.
Mo.
No.
Sala.
No.
Teague.
No.
Burgas.
No.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion fails.
Motion fails six, zero to six. Zero to six. All right. Again, thank you all for coming here tonight and representing all of your fellow commissioners. And you get to hear us say a lot of gratitude to you all directly. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And please share our sentiments and our discussion today. Thank you. All right. We are on to item number 12G, setting special election. This is a resolution setting a special election to fill council vacancy created by Andrew Dunn's resignation. And he is going to recuse himself.
Can I just abstain and just sit and watch? Because this is the less formal thing, less formal leading agenda item of my...
You may. Actually, I don't think you've any legal conflict for what it's worth.
That's what I thought.
But yes, that's fine.
I'm just going to abstain.
Yeah. And forgive me for not acknowledging this. We celebrated Counselor Dunn earlier today. But this is his last meeting as a city councilor for the city of Iowa City. And so, you can sit right there.
Thank you.
All right. Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sala.
Second.
No.
Harmson can have it.
All right. Moved by Sala, seconded by Harmson. And we're going to invite Eric to kind of lead us in this discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall, at your last work session, the council decided by consensus that you would be moving forward with a special election as opposed to an appointment to fill the vacancy that will occur at midnight on December 31st of 2024. The dates for the special election would likely be March 4th for the special election with a February 4th primary election, if a primary election is needed. That is, if there are three or more candidates, then a primary would be needed. Utilizing the new favorite vocabulary word, I say March 4th because it is as early as practicable, as required by state code. Think council is also aware that the town of Swisher is also going to be having a special election on March 4th, and the county auditor's office has asked, requested, that council seek special election on the same day. Unfortunately, there is no cost savings because there would be different ballots in different polling places from Swisher, of course, for the Iowa City election. So, those dates are included in the resolution, and I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Real quick, do we have, I was trying to look through here again real quick, see if I missed it, but we have the dates for the primary and the actual election set on this. Do we have other details about, like, when they have to turn in a petition, how many signatures would be needed? And a reminder, those signatures need to come from this district.
Yes, those are all excellent points. As my memo indicated, if council selects the March 4th special election date, then candidacy petitions are due by January 10th, 53 days before that election. Those petitions would need to have at least 144 signatures. And as you said, all those signatures would need to be from eligible electors from District C, which is, of course, Counselor Dunn's position, that is to be filled. And obviously, candidates would need to be from District C, too. I should probably state that, although I think everyone understands that.
Any other questions for Eric? All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. If you're present, please come up. Yes, welcome. Please state your name and city you're from. And you don't have to sign in because we know that you're here.
Lauren Merritt, Iowa City, and actually from District C. And I just want to say thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. Anyone else like to address this topic? Hearing no one? In person or online, council discussion?
I guess I would just urge people who are thinking about running to get on it. There's 30 days to get 144 signatures from District C, which probably requires going door to door, because we don't have a whole lot of events where you would know people are from District C. So, this is a very quick turnaround. And I think we all have been talking and listening and saying, who might run? And I don't think there's people who've actually announced yet, so as far as I know. Anyway, that, beside the point, but for those listening, note the timeline. It is very fast.
Agree.
Roll call, please.
Harmson?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Sala?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Burgas?
Yes.
With one abstain.
If you wanted to have the opportunity to abstain, please do. Dunn?
Abstain.
Okay, all right. It's not very often that you be quiet. I was going to use the word. I was going to use a different word.
Did you feel it?
All right. We are on to item number 13, council appointments. We have 13A Climate Action Commission is the only appointment for the night. And we have one vacancy to fill a three-year term, January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2027. And we'll just kind of go through, or could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dunn, seconded by Sala. And then, let's just go through and talk about who folks want.
I like Jinx Havel Sturdavant. Probably mispronounced it.
Emma Bork.
Emma Brook.
Yeah, I thought Emma Bork was interesting, too. I was going to throw her name out. I think it's her, yeah.
Well, I guess we have three for Emma. I can support Emma, although Sturdavant was also good.
Yes, I support that. How many we need to?
Just one.
Just one.
Just one? Okay, Emma.
I'll support Emma.
Okay. So, could I get a motion to...
Mayor, could we get a vote on the correspondence?
Yeah.
Yes. A motion to accept correspondence was passed and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes six to zero. Now, we are on to council discussion, which we were returning back to. And could I get a motion to appoint Emma Bork?
So moved.
Yep. So moved by Dunn, seconded by Harmson. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes six to zero. Now, we're on to items number 14. Announcements of vacancies new. 14A announcements of Housing and Community Development Commission. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2025, plus a three-year term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, January 14th, 2025. Could I get a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sala, seconded by Burgas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes six to zero. Item 15 is announcements of vacancies previous. 15A Airport Zoning Board of Commission. One vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission. One vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Adjustments. One vacancy to fill a five-year term. Board of Appeals. HVAC professional. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street. One vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woodlawn Avenue. One vacancy to fill an unexpired term plus a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. Item number 16 is city council information. And of course, again, this is Counselor Dunn's last day, and at least for a council meeting. You still have work to do until the, I think it's the January 1st.
Just before.
Right. I think midnight, I mean, of course, it's up to his resignation, but I believe it was midnight December 31st.
All right. Midnight December 31st. So...
You're still a council member, aren't you?
Yes.
I'll give you my parking pass after, in January. No, no, I really thank you for that acknowledgement, Mayor. I have really appreciated the time to work with you all and to serve the community in this way. I'm incredibly proud of everything that we've been able to accomplish over my two years on council. And I really leave this position with a lot of security and really happiness. I know that our community has an incredible team at the dais, aside the dais, and, you know, and all of our incredible other public servants. So, I'm not too worried about how things are going to go. So, yeah, I would just encourage folks to get involved. If people are interested in, you know, taking this spot, feel free to reach out to me. I've had a couple people do so. I'm always happy to meet and talk about the obligations. But truly, just trying to reemphasize also my great appreciation for all of you, the incredible work that we've been able to accomplish and are going to continue to accomplish.
Yeah. Really thank you for your service, you know? We might disagree sometime, and we agree a lot of time, but still, at the end of the day, you're still under our friend. And we're going to continue that. Thank you for your services.
Absolutely.
And I would actually talk, you know, just to that end, you know, about disagreement. I think something that I think people should know is, that's really true. You know, when I first got on council, we had a few meetings before there was something that was truly controversial, where we were like buttonheads or like it was unclear as to what way something was going to go. We had that disagreement. One side came out on top. I don't even remember what the issue was. And I was worried, I'm like, oh, is there going to be tension next meeting? There wasn't. This is truly an incredible group of professionals and people who truly love this community. And like you said, we can disagree, but then we, like, the point of the job is to get stuff done. And that's what this group does. So, again, very confident in the future of this community.
We wish you the best.
Absolutely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. We're going to move on to reports. Item number 17, reports on items from our city staff, city manager's office.
Andrew, thank you from staff. You're a fierce advocate for the employees of Iowa City, and they appreciate it, and I appreciate that. It's always good to have somebody advocating for staff. And you all do, but you in particular, Andrew, have been a strong voice for employees. So, please know that that's appreciated from the staff.
Thank you.
I'll offer my thanks as well for your passion that you bring to this office and your creativity and your ideas. Those are all welcome.
You can say insanity, it's okay.
I would not say insanity. You brought a lot of vigor to our discussions, and I appreciate that.
He is a lawyer, right? All right. That was our city attorney and our city clerk.
I would just say it's been great getting to know you and working with you, and thank you for your service and best of luck. Thank you, Kelly.
All right. We are at item number 18.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't jump in quickly enough, and I didn't want to interrupt because I want to echo everybody else's comments. But I want to switch topics just slightly because we are in for a cold snap tonight.
Okay. So, we're going back to item number 16, city council updates.
And I was actually going to kick it over to our city manager just to remind people about what services, and we had this discussion earlier about in the bus conversation, but what services are available now that the winter weather is going to be upon us again. And so, and I apologize for not giving more of a heads up, but I have faith.
appointed, they pointed out the fact that I was the one who moved to adjourn that meeting since I joined the dais. So you were, we're on the same...
All right, all right. City manager.
You may recall, last year, I believe, was the first year we entered into a contract for service for the winter shelter. We always, or historically had made a, a donation that helped the shelter house stand up a winter shelter, but we increased our, our contribution about fivefold, from about $20,000 per year to $100,000 per year, and now have specific dates in which the shelter operates. So I'm looking at, at last year's report, and I don't have the exact dates for this year, but we, we contract to have that shelter open in, in early December, and it goes through the, the middle of March. It's a total of 105 days of operation. And to give you an idea of the, the scope of that service, last year we had 283 unique individuals take advantage of that winter shelter, and that accounted for over 6,400 of nights served. So we'll happily report on that throughout this winter, but with the cold spell coming, we do have the winter shelter open for those evening stays, and during the day, we always welcome people to take shelter and enjoy our rec centers, our libraries, our senior centers, if they need a place, a place to, to stay warm during those daytime as well.
Thank you. Thank you, that was worth pausing for. We are on to item number 18. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Taken.
Move by Dunn, seconded by Sala. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, we are adjourned.